Good morning. Today is the eighteenth day of March. Time is nine o'clock. The Board is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. All three Commissioners are present. Could we have you identify yourselves for the record, starting over here?
Good morning, Kirk Cantu, Lanville.
Joe Roger, Ada County Sheriff's Office.
Alex Murray, Operations.
Bob Carney, Operations.
John Blake, Paramedics.
Peter Boardy, Clerk's Office.
Katie Reeve, Clerk's Office.
Robin Swain, Procurement.
Tim Skirtis, Clerk's Office.
Sarah Lund, Clerk's Office.
Katie Carnedoff, Operations.
Judy Morris, Commissioner's Office.
Elizabeth Duncan, Communications.
Real ID guy.
Trent Scherple, County Clerk.
Bob Perkins, Attorney.
Ray Scherple, Foreman.
Beth Mon, Treasury.
Well, thank you. county clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Very much.
Okay, no changes to the agenda, all right. We have some unfinished business we'll need to take from the table. I'll accept the motion to remove unfinished business from the table.
I'd like to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. Now, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. It is the award of bid number two five zero three two, Ada County Lanville, three-quarter inch road mix.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Before you this morning under unfinished business is the award of bid two five zero three two, the Ada County Landville three-quarter inch road mix. And the evaluation team has reviewed the bids received for this project. It would like to submit this recommendation for award letter for consideration.
Could you read the letter?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
It's a letter dated March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding bid two five zero three two. Dear members of the Board, after adhering the bid submitted, it is recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for bid two five zero three two to Compliance Solutions and Contracting LLC as the lowest responsive bidder in the amount of seventeen dollars and ten cents per ton.
Okay, any questions or issues? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I move that we award bid two five zero three two to Compliance Solutions LLC.
Compliance Solutions and Contract.
And Contract LLC for seventeen dollars and ten cents a ton.
I'll second that. Okay, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have a proclamation to designate the month of March as Certified Government Financial Manager Month. Commissioner Daley, could you read that?
I did graduate from high school, how am I going to do? It's a proclamation, Ada County Commissioners, to designate the month of March as Certified Government Financial Manager Month. Whereas the Idaho Centennial Chapter of AGA is a professional organization associated with and a part of AGA, which is a network of thirteen thousand two hundred and sixty-five members in ninety-one chapters in the United States and around the world, with two hundred and forty-one active members in Idaho representing state, federal, municipal, and private sector accountants, auditors, and financial managers. And whereas AGA Idaho Centennial Chapter members have responded to AGA's mission of advertising, advancing government accountability, transparency, and leadership as it continues its broad educational efforts with an emphasis on high standards of conduct, honor, and character in its code of ethics and making significant advances in both professional ability and service to the citizens of Idaho through their mastery of increasingly technical and complex requirements. And whereas Certified Government Financial Managers Program of AGA provides a means of demonstrating professionalism and competency by requiring CGFM candidates to have appropriate educational and employment history, to abide by AGA's code of ethics, and to pass a three-part examination requiring expertise in government environment, government financial management and control, and government accounting, financial reporting, and budgeting. And whereas each Certified Government Financial Manager must maintain certification by completing at least eighty hours of continuing professional education in government financial management topics or related technical subject every two years. And now therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners, Boise, Idaho, do hereby recognize the Certified Government Financial Manager Program for its impact on governmental accounting and financial management in Idaho and proclaim March twenty twenty-five in Ada County as Certified Government Financial Manager Month.
Great. Well, I'll accept the motion.
I will move that the Board of County Commissioners proclaim March twenty twenty-five to be the Certified Government Financial Manager Month.
I second the motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. I want to get them over here with the, how many Certified Financial Managers do we have? ...seven resolution for the sale of personal property owned by Ada County Vehicle, Parts, and Accessories. Any questions or discussion on this resolution? Okay, I'll close the public hearing on Resolution three zero seven nine. Call for a motion.
I move to approve Resolution three zero seven nine as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that. Okay, you've heard the motion, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. I'll open the public hearing on Resolution three zero eight zero, a resolution to procure Ada County Jail temporary modular kitchen in the open market. Resolution being open. We had some bids, but we didn't...
Yeah, question. Mr. Commissioner? Yes, so as you recall, we, at our opening on this project on February fourth, we only have one proposer that proposed on this project. Unfortunately, that proposer did not have their Idaho Public Works license and was found to be non-responsive. And the Board formally rejected that proposal after February eighteenth Open Business Meeting. But this project still needs to continue forward with the continued goals of the jail kitchen remodel and therefore is recommendation of the evaluation group to procure the jail temporary kitchen complex on the open market.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, I'll close the public hearing on Resolution three zero eight zero and call for a motion.
I'll move to approve Resolution over three zero eight zero as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners.
And moving on, we have our procurement of bid opening of two five zero four zero, Expo Idaho South Parking Lot Lighting Circuit Replacement. Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Ada County Procurement received two responses for bid two five zero four zero, the Expo Idaho South Parking Lot Circuit Replacement. And Robin has our bonfire all queued up if you're ready for us to open. Mr. Chairman, as the project title suggests, this project is for replacement of existing lighting circuit at the South Park Lot of Expo Idaho. And today we'll be looking at the name of the bidder and the total bid amount, which will be that base bid plus an owner's contingency of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And Robin will be bringing up our spreadsheet here shortly.
Firing up bonfire.
We are firing it up. Kickstarter.
Oh, no bids.
Okay, our spreadsheet is up there. Our first bidder is Pacific Source Elect and they have a total bid amount of nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. Our second bidder is Power Plus Incorporated and they have a total bid amount of one million, two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars. So those are our two bidders and we will need a little time to evaluate their bids. And we would request this be tabled for award to the March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five Open Business Meeting.
Okay, any questions or discussion? I'd accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we table bid two five zero four zero until the March twenty-fifth of this Open Business Meeting.
I'll second that. Okay, you've heard the motion, no further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. All right, next up, we have licenses and catering permits. We have Peddler Solicitor's License, Catering Permit, and... Any question or discussion on the licenses and catering permits?
We need a separate motion for the Peddler.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the Peddler Solicitor License as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I second the motion.
Okay, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we have three catering permits. I'll accept the motion. I'll move to approve the catering permits and licenses as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye, aye? Motion carries. Next up, we have alcohol license transfer and we have one transfer and we have one hundred and thirty-seven renewals. Any questions or discussion on any of the license transfers or alcohol license transfers and/or renewals? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the alcohol licensing license transfer and the license renewals as listed on the agenda.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have with us our distinguished clerk, star of the San Diego show.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not a ton to report, we're obviously in the midst of quite a few things with remodels, out elections, and the budget preparation that's coming up in the next month or so. But today, I just wanted to thank the Board for the proclamation today. If you get on the news for thirty seconds, you see that there's a lot of consternation around the country about government accountability and efficiency and transparency. We've been doing that for decades here in Idaho, specifically in Ada County, and it's due to the wonderful people that you got to recognize today as well as the people that work with them in the Auditor's Office. And thank you to the Board for recognizing that today and declaring this month CGFM Month. That means a great deal to them and hopefully the citizens who deserve nothing but the best because we're using their tax dollars provided essential services. So they want to know that their tax dollars are going as far as they possibly can and these folks ensure that. So thank you for that recognition today.
Yeah, well, great. We're pleased to do it, thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Claims Journal. I would accept the motion on the Claims Journal.
I'll move to authorize payment of claims on the Claims Journal dated March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. And next up, we have some personnel actions. Any questions or discussion on the personnel actions? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Next up, we have our distinguished treasurer with us today, Beth Mon, go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Like the clerk said, I appreciate and value your proclamation naming March as, or designating March as a Certified Government Finance Manager Month. And congratulations to their staff who hold this designation. It's timely because I came in this morning to the courthouse to a surprise audit of our cash, something we welcome very much. We do our own internal audits, random audits of cash, but always appreciate that external review. And what it says to me is I see this countywide commitment to strong internal controls and accounting practices. So thank you for that proclamation. I'd also note that last week I was out for a few days attending an investment conference specifically to investors of public funds. And again, timely, a lot of talks about tariffs and the uncertainty and volatility of our current economic situation. But we can all read about that and hear about it, but what was valuable to me in talking with my peers and other professionals in this area was what to do about it. And the key takeaway was, one, follow your policy. And two, if you don't have a policy, write your policy. And so I am grateful that here at Ada County, we do have a policy. We review this together every two years alongside with legal, our outside advisor. And the key takeaway again was during this uncertain time is stay true to your objectives, that is safety, liquidity, and then yield. And so that was reassuring to me just to know that we do have a policy as recommended by our peers and professionals and that we are staying true to those objectives, which our policy, when it was drafted, it was to weather the investment cycle. And so again, the takeaway was to stay the course. Now's not a time to be changing our objectives or chasing yield or trying to enter more sophisticated investment avenues, it's to just stay true to our policy, so.
Well, thank you. I'm glad we do stay true to our policy because that's the, we hold the, these funds for the benefit of the citizens of Ada County and we want to make sure they're always safe. And we do. And thank you much for your staff and your head office, yeah, thank you. Anything else you want? Okay, well, good, thank you. What we have with us, our Ada County Coroner. You're going to give us a report. Let's see the report here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Great. And let's start with the stats page. We're pretty much right in line, little bit ahead from last year on the percentage of activity. If you look over at the five-year average column, you'll see that there's a big differences there. Keep in mind, as I've mentioned before, that includes at least one year of pre-COVID numbers. And like I've said as many times as it goes, let me say it. COVID reset the bar. For some reason, it hasn't come down since then, so anyway, so don't let the five-year average numbers scare you. That's my takeaway on that one.
Okay. We'll try to, we'll try to be not scared.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Well, I might be coming in a budget time, but you know.
All right.
The activities, as you all know, we did finally get a pathologist has accepted the job offer for, to fill our position.
Did he have any high school kids?
I don't know. But yeah, I know what you're doing.
Stay longer than a...
Thank you for that little jab. He is a fellow and he'll be graduating in July. So June, he won't be able to get here till mid to late July. But that's still good for us, we're happy with that and...
Great.
I haven't made any threats to him yet, but if he does, if he posts one like he did last one, I can pretty much destroy his career before it starts, but...
Oh, we don't want that.
That don't, don't, that's, that was supposed to be anecdotal and...
Okay.
It's not an official stand on my part. Communities appointments, I have accepted an appointment to the International Association of Coroner and Medical Examiner on their Small Jurisdiction Committee. It's a newly formed committee for that organization. My intent with that is to do whatever, is to get IECME to do whatever they can to help smaller agencies meet standards and become accredited at some point. But something's been on my list for, since I got here. You probably have already been aware, our building has received an award, the E N R, I'm sorry, I don't know what engineering, I can't remember what it is. Anyway, the building got an award, so shout out to operations for all their hard work on our building, thank you so much for that. And then the, I was privileged and honored to be with our TIP program at the Governor's Office for their receiving of their proclamation of TIP, just everything that they do helping our communities. And then finally, yes, Chief Deputy Brett Harding is yet honored with yet another prestigious industry award, the John R. Hunt Award, which is presented by the American Association of Forensic Sciences. Apparently, you know, he's been in this business for thirty years, so he knows all about this stuff. Apparently, this is a bigger deal than the last one he got, so he's extremely proud of that. We were thinking of making a necklace for him, you know, to sort of wear the award around. But anyway, so it's well, well deserved and it's just another reason why I'm so grateful and very honored to have him on staff here at Ada County.
Great, well, tell him congratulations for us.
I'd like to do that.
And we look forward to seeing the award, that's great. I am particularly happy about the TIP program.
Very happy.
That's one of the better programs and it's all volunteers and, and we went to that, to their annual meeting. And that was, that was a great meeting and it's, that is a good program. And if you don't, if you don't know what that is, it's the trauma intervention program. These are volunteers that show up at trauma, when people are having a trauma. And it could be anything from automobile accident to a heart attack, all kinds of stuff. There's a trauma in their life.
Right.
And there's volunteers that show up and they, they demonstrate that the community does care about the individual. It's a great, it's a great program. I'm glad they're participating in that. Okay, well, thank you, anything else?
Nope, not yet. Oh, one final thing. This is a, this is my surprise look, but I was told the other day...
That's a good one.
No, it's not. I was told the other day that our C P scanner construction thing has been delayed due to chain, anyway. Thank you, lead times, it's just a senior moment. Supply chain, and the last word I heard was we're expecting December to have that up and running.
Really?
This is my surprise look, so.
It costs a lot of money, takes a lot of time to get something free, doesn't it?
Yeah, well, you know.
Okay. Delayed till December, that's just because of hard or something?
What, supply? I understand the... Wind wall.
Oh, oh, well, thank you, that's going to be a... An added addition to the...
It's going to be a wonderful addition when it gets here.
When it gets here.
Definitely when it gets here.
We'll be sure to thank St. Louis for it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. We have the approval of the minutes. I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the minutes as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second that. Okay, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, now we have six interim events at Expo Idaho. Any question or discussion on the events? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the agreements as identified on the agenda for Expo Idaho, Western Idaho Fair, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have two Barber Park and Education Events Center events. One with former Commissioner Andrew Kenyon for the Idaho Foundation of Parks and Lands. Any question or discussion on the, these two events? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the Parks and Waterway Barber Park Education Event Center events as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second that. Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye, aye? Motion carries, thank you. Next up, we have twelve agreements to approve.
I review the agreements and find them all acceptable. Is there any question or discussion on any of the agreements?
Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the agreements as identified on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the Board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have the weekly indigent items. I've reviewed those and find them acceptable. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the recommendations of the Indian Services Staff as listed on the summary of cases dated March, whatever day it is, eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion carries. Is there any other business that needs to be brought before the board? Hearing none, we're adjourned. Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you. Good morning. Today is the eighteenth day of March. The time is nine thirty twenty-seven. The board is in session, acting as the Board of County Emergency Medical Services District for its weekly open business meeting. All three commissioners are present. We also have with us...
John Blake, Paramedics.
Elizabeth Duncan, Communications.
And real IT guy, okay. Are there any changes to the agenda, Madam Clerk?
There are not.
No changes, all right. We'll go into new business. We have the Claims Journal. I will accept a motion on the Claims Journal.
I move to approve the EMS Claims Journal dated March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, we have personnel actions. Any questions or discussion on these personnel actions? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
I'll move to approve the EMS personnel actions as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Motion carries. Next up, we have the approval of our minutes of the eleventh of March meeting. I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the EMS Medical Services District meeting dated March eleventh, two thousand twenty-five.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have an EMS update. Give us an update. How are we rolling?
Well, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we had a successful hiring last week. Brought on several new people. I continue to be pleased with how things go for us there. We attract the cream and take the best from those folks. And so I'm always happy about that. And I think the only other thing that I mentioned to you is something that Sean, that Chief Rain has mentioned to you, that's the progress of the bills through legislative year this year. House Bill two oh six and seven, made it through both sides. One fifty-nine, Senate Bill one fifty-nine, I believe, was off to the House. And then, House Bill three eighty-eight, last I knew, was a print hearing last week. So I have no idea what's going to happen there. But we're watching from a distance as we do.
Well, good.
That's all I have for you.
All right. Anything else? Any questions or discussions? Hearing none, well, thank you. Appreciate your efforts. Later staff, we appreciate their efforts. And unless there's any more business, we'll be adjourned.
We are adjourned. Very well, thanks.
Thank you.